Check, okay. Good morning, everybody. We're going to start the meeting. We have quorum. So, welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 12th. We're going to take public comment in chambers for today's meeting. Let's start with the first public speaker. If we could call the names.
Bobby Brown, Stacy Cigar Bolinger, Samantha Mads, Dianetic, Figueroa, Goddess DEI, Seba, Abish, Aaron's, Chauncey Smith.
Mr. President, Mr. Herman was disrupting this meeting as he came into the room. This is his first warning.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you've been warned.
Good morning. First one, let's start on item number 10. (Singing) Tell me how to not be sad. You told me to burn out my heart. What can I say? Say it all again. You told me to leave and get free. Try to live by yourself. Try to find yourself. Don't waste your time for love. Just... How can I say it? My heart is so sore. If I could have you. I'll hold back my tears. The first time I held your hand. I heard your gentle touch. Every time I see your eyes. Who knows how much pain? How much pain? Item number, uh, item number 11. (Singing) From dawn to night, drinking beer. Alone in the rain. Your smile is there. Birds fly over the cherry tree. Time goes by, so slowly. The years pass through my heart. From east to west, in the crowd. A distant person, waving their hand. You have to walk the road. Many paths, don't turn back. The wind is blowing, where are you? Item number 13. (Singing) When the sun comes up, I climb the hill. I want to sing at the山顶. Singing my song to my sister. She heard my singing and laughed. The flowers are blooming in the spring. I and my sister, we hold hands. I go to the山顶, I look. I saw the red daisies all over the mountain. I'm laughing, oh, oh, oh. My heart is beating, like a drum. My sister doesn't speak, she just looks at me and laughs. I know she wants to hug me. I'm laughing, oh, oh, oh. My heart is beating, like a drum. My sister doesn't speak, she just looks at me and laughs. I know she wants to hug me. Hug, hug, hug. Hugging the moon, she's laughing. General public comment.
You have one minute.
And then, Mr. Spindler, there's no dancing in the background that's distracting. Just warning, Mr. Spindler, against dancing in the hallway.
I really don't know that in the city of L.A., I am here. The other day, I was eating at a restaurant. I was eating some leftover. Because when the, uh, when the customer left the restaurant, and then the customer said, "I can give you my leftover." However, I'm going to the restaurant table to eat the leftover. The waitress told me I'm not allowed to eat that. So, I want to inform our city attorney that, uh, when the customer paid for the food, the food belongs to the customer. And then, the customer can decide if he wants to throw the food away or if he wants to give that food to me. So, after the customer purchased the food, the restaurant is no longer owning the food anymore because the customer paid for the food. But however, our DEI waitress in the restaurant still deny me the right to eat leftover after the restaurant, uh, after the restaurant customer agreed, paid for the food, and then agreed to give me the leftover. So, I want to fight in the city of L.A. to eat leftover food in the restaurant. Thank you.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
We'll just say all items and general public comment, please.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Great, thank you. Uh, I'm going to start with item 17. This is relating to funding for what's referred to as homeless outreach services. When we see a motion that says anything about helping homeless folks, we think that's good, right? Um, my issue is that there's a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse with regard to our attempts to help the unhoused resident population. And the Controller's Office is unfortunately underfunded and understaffed, so it's difficult for them to audit these programs. Here we have an additional quarter million dollars for a company called Special Services for Groups Incorporated. Uh, we can assume that they're doing good things, but often what happens is this funding goes to highly-paid administrative salaries, and the unhoused residents don't really get services they need. I also don't know why we're taking this out of the General City Purposes Fund when we literally have half a billion dollars unspent for the unhoused resident population. I'll go to 18. Um, this is relative to reactivating and restoring a council file that has expired. Now, it's great to know that we can reactivate expired council files because there's a council file that seeks to establish a lived experience advisory board with regard to homelessness. Councilmember Rahman said it wasn't in the budget to reinstate that board, but we know we have half a billion unspent dollars in the fund for homelessness, and we know we can reactivate expired council files. So, I don't know why we're not immediately reactivating the council file to spend roughly 40 grand a year, which is pennies to our budget, to make sure that the services that we're providing our unhoused residents are actually going to good use. A lived experience advisory board would be the absolute best way to do that. Um, 19, I don't, I think is good, but I don't think it goes far enough. Item 19 is to ban residential evictions solely based on housing persons or pets displaced by the January wildfires. Fires are certainly an emergency, but we've also been under an ongoing act of emergency relating to the unhoused resident population. So, I would love it if someone would call to make an amendment to change this to have a broader scope so that each unit has an occupancy maximum, which it does. And I think that so long as the number of residents in any given unit does not exceed the occupant maximum, then there's no reason why the city should be allowing evictions. Uh, there are often landlords want to put on the lease that anyone who moves in, we need a credit score, we need a background check. And it's frankly invasive and makes no sense under a housing crisis, a so-called shortage, as councilmember Rahman calls it. So, I think this is a good motion, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think we can make the scope broader and make the effects long-term and more beneficial. (Singing) You used to hear comments remotely from constituents over the telephone. The people made their opinions known. You didn't even hold a vote when you decided to end remote. Option for commenting. Now I have to come downtown to sing. Anyone in this body could call a point of order, and you should, to ask the president to reinstate telephone comment. Don't you want to hear the voices of stakeholders before you make choices that affect our livelihood? Don't you think it would be good to ensure accessibility for everyone in the city? Reinstate the option to remotely speak to you.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be here today. I'm Chauncey Smith with Catalyst California and the Push L.A. Coalition. Uh, we've been advocating for years for the advancement of non-law enforcement alternatives to traffic safety. It's council file item 200, uh, 200875. Um, in June, the council approved the commencement of a 90-day feasibility study. 90 days has passed. And, um, from our perspective, just like to let the councilmembers know that justice delayed is justice denied. We're trying to seek timeliness when it comes to this particular matter so that we can move to end racially biased pretextual stops, limit traffic ticket fees and fines, shift towards unarmed care-based response systems, and build out, uh, street infrastructure to prevent traffic safety risks. Uh, we're over policed and under-protected, and from the standpoint of Push L.A., we need to move this particular item forward as fast as possible. Thanks for your time.
Formally, I protest Dawson's corrupt Brown Act violations, and I'll speak on items 1, 10, 11, and 19. And, uh, general public comment.
Okay, 1, 11, and 18. You'll have three minutes for those items and then one minute for general public comment.
One is for the financing of $65 million to Campbell Hall, an Episcopal religious institution in Studio City. The California Constitution and law prohibits the use of public funds for religious institutions. Likewise, the Supreme Court, under the First Amendment's Establishment Clause, prohibits direct public funding of religion and religious institutions. This motion to give Campbell Hall the $65 million violates both of these laws and more. Following the law is not anything this corrupt council can ever, has ever been interested in, but a yes vote by any member of this corrupt council will trigger calls for an immediate protest and calls for investigation. I demand a no vote on this $65 million illegal item. Anyone, when 15% of the fire department is inoperable due to corruption and incompetence. Item 10 and 11 are resolution to remove 11327 Venice Boulevard and 811 Manitoba Street from the REAP account. In my opinion, this is beneficial because it gets the property out of the REAP system where Dawson, indicted Criminal Kern Price, and demonic Tracy Park cannot manipulate it for their extortion and personal benefit. In my opinion, this item should have added wording that would return the owner's money that has been calculated from its REAP account and added to the fire department budget to repair the 15% of the inoperable fire department emergency vehicles. Our city won't burn to the ground via sleazy council incompetence. Item 19 is to temporarily prohibit evictions for people's pets because of the recent wildfires causing $275 billion in damage and city debt caused by the incompetence and corruption of this sleazy council and Karen Bass. In my opinion, this item 19 should include wording that would take the illegal $65 million in financing of item 1 and put the illegal $65 million into the adequate purchase and repair of city emergency vehicles and equipment. This item 19 should also contain wording that would not only stop fire evictions of citizens, but also include funding to investigate why this corrupt and incompetent council allowed 15% of the city's fire department to go in disrepair incompetence. Uh, general public comment. Okay, got a minute. The L.A. sleazy council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States.
You have one minute for general public comment?
Yes. I demand that phone-in public comment be immediately restored by short corrupt Dawson. The public that cannot physically come down here to this council are making their rights violated. This is official notice to cure and correct before suit. Los Angeles fire damage is $275 billion. The city is broke and homeless from incompetence and corruption. The Chinese local government officials are called mayors. They are promoted based on how much commerce and jobs they increase into their areas. Meanwhile, these clowns are handing out bags of food and grinning on Channel 35, watching the city burn to the ground. The black community has zero representation from these clown criminals. Dawson indicted Price and hot. Thank you.
Oh, the DEI hires here today.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, yes. You can take off that face mask there. So, number 14 is El Gordo. Yes. But you see, the problem is, Unisus Hernandez is El Gordo. So, who, what are we going to call Raoul de Molina? We already have a Gordo. So, remember, people, you're putting him on the Hollywood Walk of Fame where the city doesn't maintain the Hollywood Walk of Fame. They're going to urinate all over your star and shit on it and piss on it and put tents all over it. Ew, ew. And La Gorda, Unisus will go down there and try to see El Gordo. So, what is the meaning of this? Why are we calling somebody fat? What does it mean to be fat? And why are people so fat? So, number 15, we have Lily Estefan. Now, you know, back in the day, you know, Bob, Lily was pretty hot. But she's 57 years old, going on 58, Bob, and she's posting all these photos of her in the gym and wearing all these young 20-something-year-old outfits. You know, like Tracy Park tries to do, Bob. I think these women need to start dressing their age, don't you, Bob? Come on, ladies, dress your age. We know how old you are.
Speaker, speak to the agenda item.
Alls we have to do is Google it. Well, I'm talking about number 15 there, lady. See, you don't read the fucking agenda. I do. And you know why I read the agenda?
Oh, because she's illiterate.
That is correct, yes. And then, number 11, CD 16, CD 11 and number 16, we have Tracy Park, the lizard woman. Here, lizard, lizard, lizard. That sleazy, slimy lizard, Tracy Park, up to no good again. Vacating 96th Street on Sepulveda Boulevard. She's trying to get rid of all the blacks over there near the LAX people. That's the Tracy Park way. Yes, even more racist than Bob Blob and Blowed. And then, we have number 17. We got CD 10. CD 10's a large shithole, but Heather Hutt's trying her best, trying to get rid of those homeless. That's what they call them, homeless. And then, we have reactivating and restoring a council file on number 18. Why? Why are we doing this, Bob? Why are we reactivating a council file? When it's dead, it's dead. You know, like when your marriage is over, it's over. You can't reactivate anything when it's over, so get rid of it. And then, number 11. Oh, the lizard woman is busy again. Here, lizard, 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 Tracy lizard. Yes, up to no good again. Vote no on that one. And then, of course, let's see here, we get to, uh, number 1 is always a good one. Oh, CD 2, the bald-headed goat herder. Yes, Adrian the Baldwin Nazarian, $65 million Tefra. Do you think he's really smart enough to do that?
Nope.
That's right. It's all Alexis that did that. Let's give her a hand, everybody. That's good job. Now, for my public comment. See, Bob's like a lot of these white people out there, people. You know, he couldn't get a white woman, so he goes ahead, and then he has kids, and they can't decide what race they are. Are you going to do the tap dance over there with the gangs? Or are you going to wear a yarmulke? We can't decide, Bob. And see, Bob likes to shit on goat puppet by making them wait three hours. Yes, Tim, three fucking hours he made me wait, and he didn't take my general public comment. So, now, the whole week is going to be dedicating to shitting on Bob Blob and Blowed, which means you buckethead, that means you get a pass, and over there, even Noodle's going to get a pass. Noodle, doodle, noodle. And even Kern DeMille Price and the People vs. Kern DeMille Price is going to get it. We're going to focus all of our attention today on the defect known as Bob Blob and Blowed. So, remember, ladies, don't marry a Jew if you're black.
So enlightening. Okay, next speaker.
Mr. Herman, you're here every day. You need to come to the mic. We're going to start your time now.
Start his time, please.
Inglewood, Compton, and Long Beach, BHWNAs in the house. And we're going to talk about the fat bitch Molina Walk of Shame in Hollywood. La Gorda. I heard earlier they called him Gordo from Pasadena, but today, we're going to dedicate the Walk of the Nigga off of 7076 Hollywood Boulevard, where all the shit, scum, and burglaries and robberies occur. Matter of fact, as a matter of fact, people get killed and stabbed on Hollywood Boulevard because it is definitely the shit of the Zion country of the Jew-Jews. Just like we got that shit of fame called Scientology, right? Then, on item 15, Madam Attorney, another Walk of Fame bitch regarding Lily. That was the name of my mother's dog, and she's now dead. So, fuck Hollywood and fuck 7076 on Lily Estefan. I don't believe she's dead. I'll never understand why we dedicate a fucking sidewalk on a fucking public right-of-way and a fucking public path for a white nigger like me to walk all over knowing that I'm the only motherfucking star in here, and I shine like a bitch. Bitch. Then, on item number, yeah, homeless services. Who's homeless here in Los Angeles? Does anyone have an idea what a homeless person looks like? Have you ever been a part of the homeless crisis like myself? How about that smoking scan? Smoking scan. The communists made me a homeless man for two years. And I know what the supplementary fucking homeless outreach means to me. It means I'm not goddamn motherfucking thing. One, two, three, fuck all you and me. Five, six, seven, eight. I can count to alligator where the fucking money's going. So, if you put me as the appointee as opposed to Steve Soboroff for three days of half a million dollars, I will build Brentwood on the backs of every motherfucking white person who pays taxes. Now, until my non-agenda public comment. As you see, Bob, Bob, for three hours, we sat there, Bob, and you're racist Zion, racist prejudiced asshole, Bob. Let's talk about your oil life, Bob. And what about the fig tree?
Speaker, that is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body.
I'm talking about you, ma'am. I'm talking about the fig tree. Do you not believe in God? I am a God. That's why I wear this, folks. I wear this because my religion, my religion on my head represents all of you, dirty motherfuckers. That's what you are. You created a crisis. You created the homeless crisis, and now you created a fire crisis. So, as far as I'm concerned, fuck you, Bob Bloomfield, you fucking communist. And to smoking scan, they're fucking communists.
Okay, you're done. Uh, next speaker.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Shelby Richardson, and I'm with the Social Justice Learning Institute, a proud member of the Push L.A. Coalition. I'm here today because Los Angeles has a real opportunity to make our streets safer without relying on harmful racially biased policing. But we need this council to step up and act on council file 200875. To be clear, this motion was introduced four years ago. And in June 2024, the council directed city departments to report back in 90 days on how to implement the LA dot task force's recommendations. That deadline has come and gone, yet communities, especially dense of black and brown folks, are still facing unfair pretextual traffic stops. Data tells us that black folks make up just about 8% of the city's population, but we're accounted for 27% of LAPD stops between 2019 and 2021. Push L.A. is calling for real solutions, and if you work with us, we can help you solve.
Speaker, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Johnson, and I'm with Community Coalition, which is a member of the Push L.A. Coalition. Councilmembers, we need action and accountability on council file 20-0875 so that L.A. can end racially biased pretextual stops and improve traffic safety through equity-centered alternatives to law enforcement. In June of 2024, four years after the introduction of this motion, the council instructed city departments to report back within 90 days on implementing the LA dot task force recommendations. This deadline has come and gone, and no one seems to care. Meanwhile, our communities continue to be harmed by racially biased policing. How about a roll call? Where's your report, chief legislative analyst, city administrative officer, LA dot LAPD inspector general, city attorney, community investment for families department, and last but certainly not least, the LAPD? And with indications of impending ICE raids in Los Angeles, the situation is even more dire. We need action now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmembers, my name is Said Kashani. Uh, our home burned down in the Palisades fire, but that's not why I'm here. The homes and houses, some of which are very large and opulent in the Palisades, get a lot of attention. But what I'm hoping is you can pay some attention to the very large number of apartment units that burned down in the Palisades. Most of those were either rent-controlled or rent-stabilized. They were built in the 70s. Many of them were rented to seniors on fixed incomes. Now, I've reviewed your ordinances. You have your just cause ordinance, rent stabilization ordinance, and a mayor's emergency order. But what is not covered in any of these ordinances is what happens to those tenancies if and when those units are rebuilt. The only thing that applies is in your just cause ordinance, it states that if the apartment burns down, the tenancy ends. Okay. What happens when the owner rebuilds those apartments?
Speaker, you should move on to your next agenda item.
Sure. Are they rent-controlled? Does he have to give it back to the ordinary, the prior tenant? None of this is addressed in your ordinances. And I'm not here to tell you which way you should go, but you need some clarity in your regulations and ordinances as to what is going to happen to these units after they're rebuilt. Either you need to amend your just cause ordinance or amend your emergency regulation or something.
Okay, Speaker, that's not on the agenda item, so we can move you to general public comment.
Oh, that's fine. Can you, yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, I thought that was on the agenda. Uh, all I'm asking you to do is please consider both the status of the apartment owners and their tenants as to what happens next. If the tenant, if the landlord, for example, takes advantage of the emergency rule and rebuilds the apartment, at that point, does he have to relit to the old tenants? Is the apartment then still under rent control? None of that is addressed in your ordinances. Until you have some clarity on that point, owners are not really going to be able to rebuild, and tenants don't know what to do because they don't know if they're going to be able to go back to that apartment if and when it's rebuilt. So, all I'm asking to do, it's a long process, but the sooner you can get it done, the better. Just go back, revisit your ordinances, and just put in some clarity as to what happens to those apartments. Thank you.
Councilmember Nazarian, for what purpose do you rise?
Wanted to, I just wanted to offer a response to the gentleman who just spoke last, if it's possible.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Uh, Speaker.
Your staff can go speak to them on the side, or you can speak to them, but we can't, we cannot do a response.
Um, I will speak to item 9 in my general comment, then. I want to, uh, my name is Grace Hutt. I work in policy and research at Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. I want to thank the council for taking action to codify rules and penalties against the immoral and illegal act of rent gouging. Um, instances of rent gouging are happening every day, and while this ordinance is an important step in the right direction, I also want to urge the council to extend the duration in which this ordinance would be in place. 30 days after an emergency is just not sufficient. Um, thousands lost their homes, thousands lost their jobs. The impacts of this disaster are long-term, and the rental market will not stabilize in a month. Um, so these protections should be in effect for a year in order to truly protect tenants from the profiteering we're seeing. Um, I also want to urge the council to pass an eviction moratorium Um, I also want to urge the council to, uh, pass an eviction moratorium for tenants impacted by the fires on Friday. Thank you.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Dr. David Turner. I'm a faculty member at the University of California, Los Angeles, and the faculty director of the Million Dollar Hoods Project, where we work to map the fiscal and human costs of incarceration, and a member of the Push L.A. Coalition. In January of 2024, four years after the introduction of the motion, city council instructed city departments to report back in 90 days, right, on the, on implementing the LA DOT Task Force recommendation, right? Now, we're already past that deadline, and it took four years to get to that point. However, right, like, we still have not seen progress. Right now, our country is at a crossroads. We can either choose to go down a path of equity, a path of justice, and a path that actually commits us to our guide of racial justice, or, right, we can succumb to the conservative backslide. Right now, we need to make sure that we are invested in justice. The city council made a decision, right, in 2020 to pass, um, uh, city, the council file 200875, and we need to make sure that we follow through on that commitment. That's why Push L.A. is calling for an antipretextual stops and limiting traffic tickets and fines. Thank you.
I live in CD 10. I clean up trash. Council District Eight, Council District One. Ms. Hernandez, I reached out to you by email because I was the one cleaning up along the El Salvador corridor. I clean up around LAPD Olympic Station. And, um, I have a lot of ideas and ways that I can make it better for MacArthur Park and these areas, but I do what I do out of my own pocket with my own equipment. And, um, when I was cleaning up along the corridor every day, getting rid of the trash, the vendors were cleaning up the sidewalks, and they were doing a much better job. But I'm just one person, and the reason why I stopped is because LAPD didn't like me piling the stuff behind the police station, even though I had someone from street services picking up the trash. All I'm here to say is I have ideas, but no one is willing to listen, and I'd just like to work together to see if we can all come to a common ground.
Speaker, your time is up. Thank you. Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias. Este, mi nombre es Elsa Marina Marroquín. Este, y soy vendedora del Corredor Salvadoreño.
Hello, yes, I am Elsa Marino Marroquín. I am, uh, a street vendor in the Salvadorian corridor. Adelante.
El propósito de nosotros es que queremos que nos dejen trabajar y ganarlos el pan de cada día.
Uh, our proposition is for you to let us work and let us, uh, make our bread for the day.
Porque en estos días han llegado a tirar nuestras ventas ahí al Corredor Salvadoreño.
Uh, because these days our sales have gone very down in the Salvadorian corridor.
Y así es como nosotros ganamos nuestro pan de cada día, y nosotros queremos ver qué, por qué ahora después de tantos años, este, están haciendo esto.
Uh, because that, this is how we make our living every day, and we're trying to see how now, after all these years, it's that you guys are, are letting this happen.
Nosotros lo que pedimos es que como lo pueden ayudar y que nos dejen vender libremente y que no nos estén molestando.
Uh, we ask that. The way you can help us is by, uh, letting us, uh, sell, uh, in peace and not bother
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Noemi Pérez. Soy de Corredor Salvadoreño.
My name is Noemi Pérez, and I belong to the Corredor from El Salvador.
Mi motivo de estar aquí es para preguntarle qué por qué ahora de las leyes del presidente Trump ahora, este, nos andan molestando.
The reason I am here is to ask you why, um, after President Trump's laws, they are bothering
Por qué no lo hicieron más antes, no que esperan ahora que esta ley la haya puesto al presidente para empezar a molestar.
Why they didn't do it before? Why did they have to wait for President Trump to enact the law so that they could, they are start bothering us?
Y qué por qué, este, si no quieren que vendamos en las calles, por qué no, este, nos dan un lugar donde sea el Mercadito Salvadoreño, donde nosotros podamos vender?
Why they don't give, why if they don't want us to be selling on the streets, why they don't give us a space in a little market like a market from El Salvador where we could, uh, sell our products?
Porque nosotros aunque vendamos en las calles, nosotros pagamos impuestos, no vivimos de gratis.
Because even though we sell on the streets, we do pay taxes, um, to the state and the, um, the government.
Entonces ahora por eso les pido que por favor nos ayuden a, a un lugarcito donde nosotros podemos poner el Mercadito Salvadoreño, por favor.
Now, I, I am here to ask you to help us to find a place where we could have, uh, space, uh, and sell our products like a market, uh, from El Salvador.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Mr. President, uh, the, uh, city attorney has asked me to accuse myself of this item because I am a landlord.
All right.
Thank you.
There's going to be a great deal of conversations of a variety. You know, we've already started conversations around, uh, recreation and parks, uh, last year. So I ask for your I-vote so that we can...
I'm sorry, hold on, Ms. Councilmember Rodriguez. Uh, sir, you've been, uh, warned. This is your first warning? You're, this is your second warning. You're excused from this meeting. You're excused from this meeting, sir. You've been warned twice. We'll ask you to get up and leave the meeting at this time. Sir, you've been excused from the meeting.
And for the record, in case the cameras can't see it, the audience member is continuing to shout and is refusing to leave the room. He continues to sit.
I don't say no.
I am concerned that this amendment will slow the process down, not speed it up. Because this is a long, long, long report. This is something that we're not going to see in weeks. This is something we need to have happen fast, and I think this amendment is meant to bypass rules.
I agree.
And I'm concerned that rules needs to get going on this.
I agree.
Because this is critically important because we had a, we had a discussion in budget, you know, in public safety the other day that was very clear that everybody wants his bond, but it was also very clear we didn't know what we were talking about. Because folks were talking about personnel, which is not allowed in a bond. Folks were talking about dozens and dozens of stations, which would be a billion dollars, and we would never be able to do. And we didn't get around to the fact that we have a whole bunch of needs for equipment. We have a need for, according to our own report, maybe one station, probably more, I think, and we need the renovation of a whole bunch of stations. We need to get to the part where we talk about what we're asking the folks to pay for, and we need to get to what that price is. Because 25 years ago, it was half a billion dollars to rebuild about 20 stations and build a couple new stations. I guarantee you it's a lot more than that now. So my thing is that I want this, I want to move really, really, really quickly on what this bond measure is going to look like and what we're actually talking about because today we don't know. And I'm very concerned about adding another ornament to this Christmas tree, which is a good Christmas tree, but it is not a short turnaround. It's not the kind of turnaround that's going to get us to the ballot in June.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McCosker. Councilmember Park?
I, I, I thank you, Council President, and I, I really couldn't have said it better than Mr. McCosker. Um, you know, this is a great wish list of potential revenue generating items for the ci, the city. Item G include information on infrastructure bond, including ser, services for fire? I don't know what that is. And recreation and parks. All lofty goals, all things that we do need a report back on. But the motion that we introduced is for a very specific bond for specific purposes, repairs and construction for new facilities. That work is urgent and separate and apart from whatever really great ideas are, I'm sure, baked into here. So again, I, I, I ask that this be included and prioritized.
Thank you so much. So on, uh, to Mr. McCosker's point around, uh, the Rules Committee, we, uh, are going to take this up shortly in the Rules Committee. There isn't, there isn't an effort to hold the ball on it. There, there are concerns, as you can see from this Christmas tree, tree, um, full of ornaments, a concern about a variety of issues that we will have to discuss. But it'll be a, um, as Mr. McCosker pointed out, it'll be a detailed, uh, discussion because we want, one, we want to know what we're doing, but two, we want to put ourselves in the best position to be successful. And the more time we have to do that, we can do that. Councilmember Rodriguez, you're still on the queue?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. McCosker, because you're absolutely right. We want to get this thing moving. We know that the sooner we can get the C A O to start working on this with the Fire Department, we'll be able to get that number right away. But if we're wait, we're going to have to ask for all this information anyways, but this puts a finite timeline on what our expectation is to turn this around. And we're trying to get this within 60 days, and we want to get this moving because, to your point, we already know what the need is. We just need to put a number on it. And when we get that information back, along with all the other requests, at that point, we can make a decision. But this is just to accelerate this process so that we can get this heard and get this moving now. And so, colleagues, again, I ask for your I-vote in support of 8A.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Clerk, if we want to, if we, the, I believe the council should consider, um, whether or not we adopt the president's recommendations, which is to send that particular motion to Rules Committee with, and make it a part of the other discussion, or, um, adopt it today. Um, I want to hold a vote on that. If you can help me with how to word it?
Yes, sir. And, uh, you mentioned, uh, there's a motion to refer, amended motion 8A, uh, by council member, was that a motion by council member Price? Or is that upon the direction of the council president?
Um, no, I think Mr. Price was gone, so I think it definitely wasn't him. Um, I asked, I asked to refer these, I, uh, referred this item to committee, and there are members that want to overrule that.
Thank you, Mr. President. The council may now vote if the council chooses.
All right. So the vote is, a yes vote is to refer it to committee and a no vote is to hear it now? Is that correct?
For your no vote, colleagues. Not send it to the committee. Let's vote on this item and let's get this work started.
So, Mr. Clerk?
The council may now vote on the motion, uh, by, uh, Council President Herr Stossen to refer to Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Is there a second?
All right. Yes is to send it to committee with the larger discussion about bonds. No is to adopt it, uh, as an amendment right now.
I'm asking for a no vote so that we can hear this, so we can...
Mr. McCosker, you're on the queue.
I have, um, a clarifying question, I think, if it's appropriate. Is it set for a discussion in rules?
No.
Is it set for a discussion in rules?
Say that again?
Is the item set for a discussion in rules?
No.
It is not set for, it has not been agendized for a session of rules. I fully intend to hear it in rules right away. I'm the chair of rules.
That doesn't happen, Mr. McCosker.
All right. So Councilmember, Member Rodriguez wants a no vote, which means we adopt it now. Council President is asking for a yes vote, which means we refer it to committee. Um, that's correct, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
All right. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 Is, 5 No's.
Amending motion 8A is referred to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
It, it just feels like a, a, you know, it, it's a, it's a game that's being played here, and all we're trying to do is help the Fire Department get started on this work. So if, again, I don't know why our motion is getting singled out on this, uh, but all we were trying to do is get this work started. And if you're going to send it all back to rules, or you're saying you're having some, uh, some greater master plan around this, then send the whole thing, send 8F, uh, back to Rules Committee too. Why is it just the fire bond motion being subjected to this?
Well, because one of them is a, one of them is an annual budget question. A bond is a 30-year commitment that voters make, so it's a very different thing, and it's something that has to go to the voters.
Well, we're very familiar.
So we spoke with both your office and, uh, uh, Council District 11 yesterday to let you know we hadn't had a Rules Committee in January at all because of everything that happened. We have one that we have a backlog from October that we have to have, which is the one that you've seen agendized, and I guess you've decided because it's not on that agenda, it's not going to be agendized. At the next scheduled meeting, we will take up this issue. So, so that is the, that's, that's what we're doing. And you can decide that that conversation isn't important enough to wait on. I think it is.
But I don't understand why we are...
So, so that's not, that's not a game. I just want you to be clear. It's not a game. It's not a backroom deal. It is my position on how this should be handled, both separate and apart from annual budget items and things that the city needs and a bond that we're going to go to the voters for, that we haven't gone to the voters for in 25 years, and 25 years ago, the city failed.
But to be clear, just, just so everyone's clear what the original motion was, the underlying motion that Ms. Park and I introduced, this is an instruction so that we can determine, have the C A O and the Fire Department determine what the amount is that we need. It doesn't put the bond on the ballot. It doesn't do any of those things. All it says is get the work started. Let's figure out what the amount is that we need. Let's look at the, the scale of our need. So, so when you say, Mr. President, uh, oh, I'm going to hold all this information, procedurally, all we're doing is advancing this so that the, the departments can start working on this data. That's what we're trying to do now. So what are you going to consider in a full context unless it's, you know, again, if you're waiting for all the other bond, we're not adopting, we're not placing a bond on the ballot yet, we're not doing anything. This is simply the procedural work that we have to do to instruct the C A O and the Fire Department to begin this work, and that's all we're trying to do. And we want to get that information together as quickly as possible. That's it. And so sending this item, referring it back to committee, is only delaying what will inevitably have to come forward again, is to get them to start working on that information. No different than 8F, but for some reason, that, you want to move forward, procedurally, it makes no sense. I don't see why we can't, uh, why we can't start the work for the Fire Department now. And, uh, and that's, so, again, I, I don't understand why, why we're going through this, but it hasn't been scheduled. All our goal is, is to make sure that we get this information as quickly as possible, folks. And sending it back to committee, not approving it today, is essentially holding it up. And if we're, uh, gonna hold up, uh, this piece, well, then send all the other pieces back to, uh, to Rules Committee. If we're going to have a holistic conversation, I don't know what we're going to have a conversation on in rules because you have no data. You have no idea what the cost of it all is going to be, and it's conflating all of these different municipal needs together, and this is a specific one that we can start working on immediately. That was the goal.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez? Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, uh, the council, there is a motion, Rodriguez Park, to refer Recommendation F of Item 8 of the Budget and Finance Committee Report to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Is this correct?
Okay. All right. And, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez is asking for a yes vote on this, and I am asking for a no vote on this item. So open the roll. Mr. Clerk, can you repeat?
Yes, sir.
What's before us?
The matter before council, which is motion Rodriguez Park, is to refer Recommendation F of Item 8 of the Bu, of the Budget and Finance Committee Report to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
All right. Councilmember Blumenfield?
Confused by this. Didn't we just refer this to the Rules Committee? The amendment in order to do what we want to do, which is get the process started right away. So if we refer F, how does that change anything? That's, isn't that doing the same thing? I, I, I'm confused. If we include... I, I, I'm confused. I mean, if we include information on infrastructure bond, services for fire, and wrecking parks, we refer that to Rules Committee. Your amendment is essentially doing that. It's just putting a finer point on it, right?
You have no data. I, again, I don't understand what the point of referring it back to rules was, and that's what, that's what Ms. Park and I were advocating for. If you're going to move 8F forward, why would you not allow the specific item with respect to the fire bond to be included in advancing forward today? So if Mr. Harris Dawson is saying, well, no, I want to have all these conversations, I don't know what conversations you're going to have in rules about this because you've basically got no data to determine at this juncture what is actually being proposed to be included in a bond. So all we, all, all our amendment was doing was accelerating the scheduling or the approval to get the Fire Department and CAO specifically on, on the fire bond.
No, I, I understand that, and then, then the Council President said he wants to hear that first in Rules Committee, and we, we voted to allow that. But now we're saying, send F to Rules Committee.
Right.
Which, we already have the, the measure. What, what you, what you're asking for, which is to get the information, which we all want to get right away, was sent to Rules Committee. So what, F is just sort of, I, I don't know what it matters. It's like, it's repeating the same thing.
Well, it mattered apparently when it was our motion. I'm just wondering why, like, if, if it's all going to go to have a conversation at rules, have it all, at rules together.
So you're saying move the entire, because the motion, as I understood it, what was on the floor was to just move F to the Rules Committee.
Correct.
And F is just a generalized version of what you had, which was more specific to say, get the data for the.
Councilmember Rahman. Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Blumenfield, were you done?
No, it's all right. To me, voting yes on this is the same as voting yes on your previous motion. It's sending it to, to the Rules Committee. And yet, we're having the opposite side say the opposite thing, so that doesn't make sense to me.
I, I agree. Councilmember Rahman?
Sorry, I thought we called the question, and I was hoping we could move this to a vote.
We don't understand what we're voting on.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we got nobody else on the queue who hasn't spoken. So, uh, that allows us to, uh, take up this vote. And, Mr. Clerk, one more time, for the good of the order, you tell us what we're voting on.
Yes, sir. The matter before council.
Hold on. Councilmember Padilla?
What vote is on the table?
Mr. Clerk is about to explain that.
The matter before council is motion Rodriguez Park to re, refer Recommendation F of Item 8, the Budget and Finance Committee Report, to the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez is asking for a yes vote on this item. I am asking, along with the Budget Chair, for a no vote on this item, which would mean that these, uh, items would stay in Budget and Finance. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
5 i's, 10 no's. The motion fails.